Well, good evening everyone and thank you very much. Before proceeding tonight, I'd like to first of all acknowledge traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight and pay respects to Elvis Past and Present. I'd like to invite Reverend Chris Bodich, Anglican Church at Mendes Farm, to open our proceedings for the prayer. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your goodness and loving kindness to us and to all people. We thank you for this world that you have made and all the blessings we enjoy. May we never take for granted the gift of life in such a beautiful place as the city of Clarence. God of justice and truth, we pray that you would grant to our governments and to all who serve in public life, wisdom and skill, imagination and energy. Protect them from corruption and the temptation of self-serving. Help us all to commit ourselves to the common good, that our community may be a secure home for all its peoples. Lord God, you are the ruler of the nations, and we pray for the Clarence Council, for its members and officers. Direct their work tonight and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory, for the safety and welfare of this country, and so that peace and happiness, truth and justice, may be established among us. We pray that you would continue to make Clarence a diverse community that works together, that we would be a vibrant, prosperous, and sustainable city, and that all decisions tonight might enable this vision. We pray all this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thanks very much. Chris Bodich, sorry. And finally, I'd like to advise, the meeting is being recorded, audio visually, and will be available on our website later this week. Thank you. We have a meeting open, and note apologies from Alderman Deborah Thely, who's on leave of council. Item two, confirmation of minutes for 7th of May, a suit loaded to be taken as read and confirmed. Thank you, Alderman Pierce, second to Alderman Chong, all those in favour, carried unanimously. There's nothing to report, item three. Item four is the council notes for workshops conducted on the 14th and 21st of May, and the agenda brief on the 25th of May. Thank you, Alderman Chong, second to Alderman Cusick, all those in favour, carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Are there any declarations of interest? Thank you. Tableting of petitions, general manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, I have two petitions tabled this evening. The first is signed by forty-five signatories and relates to us, or requests to council to investigate and implement streetworks and other improvements that will minimise traffic hazards in the crest of Norma Street Power, between Eden Place and Medica Court. I'll table that. And I table a petition containing one thousand two hundred and four signatures, requesting council hold a public meeting about the proposed developments by Hunter Developments on Rosney Hill. I'll table those.
Thanks, General Manager. It is timely for me to ask you if you could refrain from either capping and cheering when a particular speaker puts a point of view, or hissing and booing when another speaker puts a point of view. There are some contentious issues tonight, and it's really important that speakers be given an opportunity without fear or favour to present those arguments, so I appreciate your support in that regard. Thanks. Item seven, public question time. There are no matters on notice. Question seven point four is question without notice. Are there any members of the public who'd like to ask questions without notice? General Manager. If you could come forward, please, to the microphone. Please. Can we ask anyone wanting to ask a question, that they actually just do come forward to the microphone, please? Thank you. And state your name and address, please.
My name is Peter Marsh, I'm in 12 King Street, Bell Rhyne. When the Bell Rhyne Bridge car park was conveniently relocated to Durham Street and attached to Bluffs Arena on safety grounds, the Alderman's chamber at the time announced that the reason why it was called safety is the law. If safety is the law, why has it taken the Mount King Council years to begin to effectively protect positions around the streets of Bluffs Arena on Gay Day, the King of the Bay Drive, and the Rosney Hill Drive Street intersection, which by the way, is still a night near to these pedestrians across?
Thanks, Mr Marsh. We will take that question on notice and provide an answer in the minutes of the next meeting.
Thank you.
So can I just ask, Mr Mayor, if Mr Marsh could actually, whilst we have it on recording, if he has that in writing, which he's read from, can he table that for us, please?
Are there any other questions without notice?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have the two major...
Name and address, please.
You, Edin.
Look, for the record, please, I know, Mr Fig, but I think it's important to state it for the record.
For the record, I was nicked over the church at Oldham, so that's my problem. My name is Michael Fig. I've got a question, the general manager. We just had two major round events, the figure's been fifty years, and then recently the figure's been a hundred years. Can you tell me when you're going to nick the towers, the hump behind the church that I've just mentioned on South Arm Road, so that your storm or the system will work?
Can we also take that one on notice and the answer will be... Mr Fig, we'll take that.
Second question, if you'd allow him, the general manager to answer it. Is that the case?
Look, we'll take it on, that question on notice. If you've got another question, could you please ask it?
The second question is, can you please clarify, under the Local Government Act, you call for conflicts of interest. Is it true under the Local Government Act that if Alderman does not stand and declare interest, and does vote that that vote is held?
The matter of declaring an interest is up to the particular Alderman concerned...
Yes.
And it doesn't invalidate the vote.
If he doesn't leave or doesn't declare it.
If there is a conflict of interest...
Yes.
And it's not declared, it doesn't determine the vote, it doesn't affect the vote.
Right, so why do we ask if they often tell us leave?
All right.
Do you want me to answer that? Yes. If the Alderman declares an interest...
Yes.
They are required to leave. If they don't declare an interest, they are not required to leave because it's deemed that they don't have an interest. Now, secondly, that answers the first part of the question, if they don't declare an interest and participate in a vote, and are subsequently found to have an interest, my understanding is it does not invalidate the vote.
Thank you. Any other questions without notice? Thank you. Item eight, deputations by members of the public. We have a few, and I do remind the speakers come forward, that under regulations, we have just three minutes, and there will be a tone at thirty seconds to go, to enable you to wrap up if you're pushing the timer. Thanks. Mr Mayor, our first speakers this evening, William Barwick, Samuel Barwick, and Liam Marr of South Arm, who wish to address council in relation to the development application pertaining to the South Arms skate park. They're going to share their permanence, I believe.
Hi, my name is Sam Barwick, beside me is my mate Liam Marr and my brother Will. All of us have grown up in South Arm and still live here today. Just before we start, I'd like to thank the council staff and Alderman who have helped create this skate park into a design that takes all feedback on board. A community who supports the project and skateboarders and also opponents, with concerns raised in relation to the positioning generation of noise and overall establishment of the skate park, which have been negated through the hard work of the council members, through noise surveys, reports, research, redesigning of our original structure of the skate park and positioning, as well as further community consultation throughout numerous stages of the development. All major concerns have effectively been addressed, as well as the opportunity for council members with any objections of the development to be heard by council. In 2014, when we commenced our public consultation through a door-knocking survey, all but one resident that resides on the boundary of the current proposed location, designed as active recreational area, signed our original position in support of the proposition of our project, which we have in writing. The concept of establishing a skate park within our ever-growing community has proven to be drastically beneficial for current residents from all ages and backgrounds, as well as for future generations within the coming years. Within the initial stages of public surveys and consultations regarding the new community project, which is in the greater interest of the majority of residents, the concept of a skate park was originally supported by eighty-five percent of our community. Genuinely, we feel that all arguments and objection to this project have been generated out of uneducated stereotypical judgement, selfishness, and in general, a fear of growth within our community's wellbeing and the establishment of other future projects for our community.
Concerns such as an apparent increase in drug and alcohol use and unexplained incidence of crime have been manifested and fabricated to attempt to establish fear within our community in relation to skateboarding and the benefits of the skate park for the youth of our community. Ironically, we've been misguided and felt threatened as a result of our dedication, passion, and hard work towards this project throughout the last five years. We don't feel that we need to highlight, argue, or persuade all of those who are in opposition of the establishment of the South Arms skate park, as we have overwhelming support from Crime Stoppers Tasmania and the community itself. We understand that the complainant's views needed to be heard, and points of concern have been addressed. That has been our struggle for the last five years, and here we are, standing before you tonight, asking for you, our council, to approve this highly-needed skate park for South Arm. If you take a look around the room tonight, you can see all the support from our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Next speaker is Mr Mayor, is also a shared presentation from Mr Brian Chapman of King Street Bell Rhyne, and Chris Reevolt of King Street Bell Rhyne. Now, if you could bear with us a moment, because I think they're in the other room and have to make their way through. Thanks.
Thank you. Dear Mr Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. We believe the proposed development of twenty-seven King Street Bell Rhyne, which is DA two one eight two zero one eight one ninety, in its current form, should not proceed. As neighbours on either side of twenty-seven King Street, we believe the development will have an adverse visual impact on our own properties and the existing historic Bell Rhyne Fluff street scope. Twenty-seven King Street is already an attractive heritage listed home and stands directly opposite to other lovely heritage listed homes. We are not talking about a minor or small-scale addition here, but rather an attempt to impose a large contemporary design on a clearly identifiable heritage building. The proposal will diminish that heritage value. Council's contracted heritage advisor in Onceston advised that the more significant heritage portions of the building, including facade elements and bulk of the building, would remain largely unaffected. While this is reinforced by the Tasmanian Heritage Council in their decision to consent to the proposal, they both missed a very important observation. This observation is where the proposal presents a negative visual impact from the street, from an oblique view. When viewed from directly in front on the footpath, there will certainly be minimal visual impact. However, when viewed from an oblique position on the same side, or worse still, the other side of the road, and not directly in front of it, there will be an overbearing, obtrusive contemporary addition seen the same size as the existing heritage listed house in front of it. Ian Bosmer, Works Manager of Heritage Tasmania under delegation of the Tasmanian Heritage Council, today said that even under the new planning guidelines, individual councils still have the ability to build in provisions. Clearly, after talking to Ian Bosmer, it seems an oblique view was not considered by the Tasmanian Heritage Council, nor your own council's contracted heritage officer in Onceston. The attached sketch has helped to show oblique views. Should council accept the recommendation when point one, point two-two on page fifty-two of your agenda indicates the proposal is discretionary? The proposal does not meet the acceptable solutions under the scheme relating to building envelopes, solar access, privacy, and heritage, and the report in front of you also refers to four non-compliances. And yet with these non-compliances, the development has been recommended for approval by your own offices with only one minor condition put upon it. This condition was presented solely by the Heritage Council officer. There are absolutely no conditions suggested by your own officers. We believe that in its current form, the development should not proceed, and recommend that you present your own provisions, or recommend our mediation with the developer. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr Chapman. Contrary to the general manager's advice, there are two separate presentations, so three minutes starts again.
Oh, I realise that. Oh, actually, one's a lot shorter. Okay, I'm Lesley Reevolt, and I live at twenty-five King Street, and I'd like to address the building that's going to be built at twenty-seven King Street, which has, by my reckoning, transgressed four times from the prescribed... I can't think of the word, but put one into yourself. Right. Okay, I would actually like to address what the council planning authority said were the acceptable solutions for the four transgressions that happened. I believe the acceptable solution for the gross tran... I'll get it right in a minute. I believe the acceptable solution for the gross transgression of the prescribed building envelope, that is, three metres in height beyond the prescription, be mediated. I believe the total length of the building is in fact twenty-two point five and not nineteen point five as stated by the planning. Again, this is not inside the envelope, and it does make the house extend a further four point five metres than our own house. Jack design going outside the envelope in size and bulk, right? They consider our property to have only two bedrooms and a study on the relevant facade facing the building. However, this is not true. There are four bedrooms and one study. It speaks that I have various outbuildings on my property. I do not. I have one shed, and it's right down the back, not near where the building is occurring. And it says that I have shade sales, which I do, for three months of the year, all right? So the remaining nine months, they will not be there. It also says that I have a bulky rear end, which really annoys me, because I do not have a bulky rear addition to my home. It is single level, and totally, this is incorrect, as was stated in the report. The overlooking does not apply in that three months that I have my shades up, or when I'm standing in my shed. However, it is impossible not to overlook my property for the remainder of my backyard, which is more than three-quarters of my backyard, will be overlooked by a building which stands two point five metres above my building already, and then a further seven. So if I can't see over a six-foot fence, I'll go here. All I'm voting for is that there be mediation between those who want to build and those who live beside them. And that mediation should probably be available for a session tomorrow, or else the thirtieth of May should not be considered the closing date for this topic. Finished.
Thank you very much, Mr Freeman.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
No more speakers, Mr Mayor.
Moving on to item nine, motions on notice, nine point one, notice of motion, Alderman James, brief them at least two in my way. Sorry. Shall we have a second, please? Alderman Cusick, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I'll be brief in relation to a notice of motion, other than to say that at a meeting on the tenth of May two thousand and eighteen, at the Clarence Lifestyle Village, about ninety residents, actually, live at the village, expressed their concern about the dangerous section of the East Irwin Highway from Jillston Bay down to the, almost near the roundabout at Grass Tree Hill Road. There has been substantial development at the corner of Piper's Road and East Irwin Highway, and that is still to be resolved in relation to some traffic calming measures. The motion that's before us is that council writes to the Department of State Growth and recommend the current speed limit on the East Irwin Highway between Jillston Bay and the Clarence Lifestyle Village be reduced from a hundred kilometres an hour to eighty kilometres an hour. Mr Mayor, we can only recommend, this council has no authority in relation to state roads, although I understand we do have meetings with government agencies from time to time, and that includes police, the Department of State Growth, Parks and Wildlife, et cetera. So this motion is really, if it's carried tonight, would be sent, a letter would be written, to the department, and suggest that at their meetings, or would council and other agencies, that the speed limit on the East Irwin Highway be reduced from a hundred kilometres an hour to eighty. I seek council's support.
Yeah, I support Alderman James in this. It is a busy piece of road. You have the Clarence Lifestyle Village, Piper Road access, access to properties on Piper Road, that intersection, and you have a holiday complex down the road towards the hotel, which is a significant holiday complex. I think it is a very sensible move.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with the last two speakers. I'm actually surprised that this remained, it's not a large section in the road, it's only probably been under a K, but I'm surprised it stayed at a hundred K after this had disappeared, probably four, five, eight months ago. And really, to have this reduced to eighty, as the residents of the Lifestyle Village want, and I know other people wanted it to be reduced, so I certainly support this motion to write to the Department of State Growth, and then it'll be up to them.
For Roger, if I, Alderman James. So the recommendation before the chair is that we write to the Department of State Growth, requesting eighty kilometres an hour over that section of the Eastern High, all those in favour, carried unanimously. Thank you. Item nine point two, Alderman James. Shall we have a second before this motion? Alderman Cusick, thank you.
The motion that's before the chair is that council holds a public meeting for the about proposed Rosney Hill development within seven or fourteen days, or earlier off the decision of this council, for the purposes of community consultation and information sharing. Mr Mayor, about three weeks ago, a petition was presented to this council, and there was, at the time, was about a thousand and twenty-seven signatories. It was subsequently found that the procedure for lodging petitions had changed, and this council became aware of this, and as a result, the signatories and the people who actually sought to have signatories for the petition were basically sent, had to go back and either lodge electronic version or a paper version of the petition. So in fact, there's been three weeks lost in relation to that petition, and we would have, at least tonight, have had a response as part of the process on that petition. As a result of this evening, a second petition, a petition that has been lodged and was tabled this evening, is on the same wording as was on the first petition. And as a result of that, the process of that petition is going to take some time to go through the system, and also be able to be followed through as and when, and it could be some weeks or months before the second petition could in fact, actually, a meeting could be held. In council's protocols for consulting and communicating with stakeholders, our operational policy, under the definitions, and this is council's operation policy, communication is the imparting and or interchange of thoughts, opinions, or information by speech, writing, or signs. Also, in the protocol policy of council, consultation is a process where individuals, groups, or agencies exchange opinions, facts, or reactions. In the motion that's tonight, is calling on a public meeting prior to the actual decision of council, the whole, the thrust of the motion is for community consultation and information sharing. And so the information sharing, and also the community consultation, is just that. And because this is a major project on Rosney Hill, then why shouldn't we have that public meeting sooner rather than later? Because the information in relation to the petition will be some time down the track, and therefore, we may not have the opportunity to have some information sharing with the public before the actual decision of council is made. In the handout that was sent to...
Alderman James, could I just hold you there for a moment? Members of the audience would notice that there's a gentleman moving around with a microphone. I think it's very important to explain, as you would understand, that the sound is not coming over very well from time to time. As different speakers speak, you can't hear what's going on. We've got a sound assessor in here, actually recording sound levels, so that we can get some expert advice on how to improve the audio functioning of the whole chamber. So if you're worried about what's happening, that's what's happening right now, measuring down. Thanks, Alderman James. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I could see there some concern.
I thought, Mr Mayor, there's going to be a Q and A session here. So the purpose, as I mentioned, is to have a public meeting before the actual petition goes through the process of going through the statutory process. In the actual submission, and one of the reasons why I believe it's appropriate for us to have the public meeting now, and that is at the meeting that was held at the Rosney Bowls Club on the sixth of May two thousand and fifteen, which I believe was a great move by Hunter, to be enabled to have some information sharing and also some discussion in relation to the Rosney Hill development. And as a result of that report, the greatest concern that came out of that meeting, and they were, as thirty-eight written submissions that were received, there was twenty-two of the thirty-eight, or fifty percent was to do with traffic. Now, as a result, if we, if this motion is carried tonight, then we can have some discussion. And of course, traffic is probably one of those issues that needs to be discussed, and at the same time, the councillors, if we desire to attend, then in fact, we can listen and understand, or take on board, or basically receive the comments from the public in relation to this. I seek my colleagues' support for the motion, because it would be seen to be a good gesture on our part, as part of the council's participation and its information sharing, for us to at least heed their request within the petition, and also to, to hold the public meeting prior to obviously a decision being made by council. Mr Mayor, I believe this is appropriate, and seek council's support.
Alderman Cusick.
I've supported Alderman James' motion tonight, in the interest of listening to debate on this. I do not think it would reflect well on council, this motion lapped for one of the second day. I'm not sure whether or not I've supported the motion when voting. I understand there are some potential problems that may arise if the council initiates a public meeting, given what questions Alderman might be able to answer, or might not be able to answer at such a meeting. Alderman James has... Alderman James has mentioned information sharing. I'm certain and I'd want to hear from other Aldermen and maybe officers as to what, what potential problems might arise in Alderman sharing information. I understand that there are potential dilemmas Aldermen might find themselves in in attempting to answer questions at a public meeting, and then sitting as a planning authority to decide whether to approve or not approve this DA. And I'd like to hear the input of other Aldermen and their officers on this, and the ramifications might arise. Also, as we've been told tonight, a petition has been lodged on this matter, and given the thoroughness of the organisers of this petition, I assume it will be a complying petition, and that will require council to hold a public meeting on this matter, and hence, as I understand, and you might, we'd need to hold two public meetings, we'd need to hold two public meetings on the same matter. It might be argued, and Alderman James said in this, that the petition, public meeting, discussion, debate on it might not be able to be heard before the DA is considered, but I'm not sure about that, and it's probably unlikely. So I'd like to hear input from others on any potential problems in passing this motion.
Yeah, other speakers. Alderman Carron.
Point of clarification to the General Manager. Would you have a timeline on the petition that's been tabled tonight?
Press, Mr Nelson will correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but the process is that I would report, I have forty-two days to report back to council whether it's a complying petition or not. I would certainly use every endeavour to ensure that we report it back at the next council meeting as to whether or not it's a compliant, sorry, a complying petition of sufficient quantity to trigger a, the statutory process for the calling of a public meeting. There are then timelines within the Act to call that public meeting after that. If council determine to hold the public, or the petition triggered the necessity for council to hold the public meeting, there's then a twenty-one day, thirty day period for prior to the meeting being held, and a twenty-one day period contained within that for the inviting of public submissions. So it's not going to happen within, the petition's not going to invoke it happening within, you know, seven or fourteen days. It would be probably, yeah, probably mid-July, early mid-July, but the earliest before the meeting could be held.
Other speakers. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm actually not, not the first to holding a public meeting, I just have, I guess, a couple of questions that perhaps can be answered in the right of reply. My first one is around procedural fairness. The process that you've just outlined in, in terms of the petition is a, is a very lengthy one, obviously, but it does involve public notice fees, it involves time for people to send information in, make submissions and so on. The issue I have with a seven or fourteen day period is how do we get information out to people to tell them that there's going to be a public meeting? What communication method do we have that could possibly get out to everybody that might be involved and give them time to consider the issues, and then possibly attend a meeting or make a submission if they can't attend it? My other issue is I understand that a shared development application has been lodged, if I'm, if I'm wrong.
Three, Mr Mayor, the development application has been lodged, further information has been sought, and it's not at this point, whilst it's been lodged, it's not at this point a valid application.
Right. Now, my understanding, and again, correct my mistake, because it's been lodged, that would actually constrain what we as Aldermen can say at any public meeting, because obviously, as Alderman Cusick mentioned, we have to at some point put our planning authority hats on and actually consider that as a planning authority, and that makes it very difficult for us in any public meeting to give opinions or anything that isn't just a straight fact, if you like. And obviously, because we haven't seen the development application at this time, that's actually really difficult for us to do. So I guess it, in the end, it comes down to me to, how can we guarantee that this meeting can get out to everybody, that anybody who wants to be involved can get there, that they can give us information if need be, and fundamentally, what value will such a meeting be to the community if we can't actually give them any more information than they have already?
Yeah, other speakers. Alderman here.
Yeah, I'm also seeking some clarification, which I hope Alderman James can address in this right of reply. He talks, in the motion, he talks about consultation, information sharing, and the question I have is exactly what are we sharing information and consulting about? Now, if it's, if it's about the development itself, the information about, about the development, the kind of format it's going to take, that information, of course, will be, will be advertised once the development application becomes valid, but at the moment, that is the intellectual property of the developer. So how do we, how do we get over the fact that it's, it's really up to the developer whether or not they want to present that information? They have presented in the community consultation, but we, we don't know if the ultimate application might, might take a slightly different form to what, what they presented. But, but it is, it is their information, their intellectual property, we can't compel them to divulge it. So what if we, what if we get to a public meeting and we, we don't have anything to present, or what we have to present doesn't actually take the form of the, the application itself? And on the issue of, on the issue of consultation, I mean, that is part of the development application process, but we can't take that consultation and then, yeah, obviously consultation go back to the developer and they can feed that into their process, but if the development application's already lodged, then, you know, what is that consultation going to achieve? How is it going to, how is it going to inform the application or changes to it when, when you have a development application already lodged? So I'm just, want some clarification around that. Or if we're not sharing information and consulting about the development itself, if it's, if it's something about the process, then the question I have is what, what is it about the process? So I'm, I'm not clear on what, what it is that a public meeting will be sharing information on, consulting on, and, and attempting to achieve.
Thanks, Alderman here. Other speakers? You've already spoken, I think, Alderman Carron. I'm sorry, you only get one opportunity to-
For clarification?
Yeah, look, I'm sorry, but you only have one opportunity to enter the debate. Alderman Von Berto.
This motion is certainly possible under the Local Government Act. Section fifty, that, sorry, section sixty F allow for council on its own motion to hold a public meeting to discuss any issue the council determines. In the actual motion that's been put by Alderman James, he refers to community consultation. And our community participation policy actually details that to consult is a two-way communication designed to obtain public feedback about ideas on rationale, alternatives, and proposals to inform decision-making. The actual motion also refers to seven to fourteen days, as far as the timeframe is concerned, for holding the public meeting. In the explanatory notes of the motion, it actually refers to the lodgment of a development application, so that this public meeting should occur before the lodgment of the application. As we've heard, the lodgment has already occurred, and there are certain things that are required before it will be a valid application. However, I think it's very important to note, and this is my understanding, that once there is a valid development application, then any decision made at a public meeting cannot have a bearing on the Land Use Planning and Approval Act process. So that's very important to note. Under section sixty F of the Local Government Act, there is provision for initiating a public meeting, however, under section sixty A of the Local Government Act, there are the details as to if there is a public meeting by petition. And that goes into quite an amount of detail as to notifying the public. We have thirty, around about thirty thousand electors in Clarence.
Order please.
So we actually need to be able to notify all of those electors, and that requires that we actually notify them, if it was a petition public meeting, by putting at least two notices in a local newspaper. And then, it is required that people are invited to put in written submissions in relation to the matter before the public meeting. So they are given twenty-one days from the first notice. This is all about, as Alderman Chong said, procedural fairness. That is a really important concept that we need to keep in mind. Procedural fairness is actually an aspect of natural justice, and it actually entails-
Mr Fig, look, if you keep interrupting, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
It entails listening, i.e. having a hearing, and it also entails looking at bias or apprehended bias. In relation to a hearing, I believe that it is really important that we give all of our electors the opportunity to have time to be able to actually provide us with written information that then can be submitted at that public meeting so that everyone knows what the issues are, and that everybody has the opportunity to actually be able to attend. So we need those thirty days. The idea of having seven to fourteen days is not acceptable from a procedural fairness perspective. So I can't support Alderman James' motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker.
The initial speech delivery by Alderman James letting me with some matters requiring clarification, I've now heard the presentations from Alderman Cusick, Chu, Chong, and Von Berto, and again, this does indeed build a case that this notice of motion is problematic. And it's sort of straddling two different worlds. We have a statutory process through petitions, which is now underway and being vetted, and we have a development application in train, and we also have the ability for a public group of, of any matter or nature to call a, a meeting to raise an issue they wish to speak about at any time, and invite Alderman and anybody else to attend. And given the complexity of, and the problematic nature of this notice of motion, that, that would seem a better course of action in conjunction with the statutory petition processes going on. I, I do like the, the closing remarks of the motions mover, to see whether I can get some, some comfort around things, but as, as this debate has gone on, I've become less, less comfortable with the process around this notice of motion.
Okay. Alderman here.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, look, I think in Alderman James' motion, seven or fourteen days, the seven one's a bit ridiculous, but fourteen days, look, I see nothing withholding two public meetings. I understand the concerns for some people, but I have given some concerns about the preliminary things going on at Rossney Hill, and I don't mind people telling me that there's good things about what they're doing and some things, bad things about it. So to have two meetings, I see nothing wrong with, nothing wrong with it at all. I mean, it gives the community a good chance to inform us of what's going on, and they will learn a lot more of what is going on. So I look, I see nothing wrong with two meetings. I really wish Alderman James would just say, like, fourteen days and not seven, because I think that's just too rushed.
Other speakers? Rider reply, Alderman James.
Here, I tried to go through these matters that have been raised by my colleagues, one by one. The, the question of the seven to fourteen days, council currently has a website, and many residents within the city I know actually access the website to keep up with works and any issues pertaining to Clarence City Council, and it's very regularly actually sorted or approached. The second point I'd like to make in relation to this is the Rossney Hill network have established or have been able to obtain over twelve hundred signatories, and possibly more because of the paper petition that was lodged earlier. So in actual fact, as far as getting the word out, I don't think it's an impossibility, and it can be achieved, because this issue is an important issue for the people of Clarence, and I believe that we could do that within fourteen days of this decision. The, the other point that's been made is the sharing of information. We, we've already been down the track of having a public consultation at the Rossney Bowls Club in 2015. We've already had that, and Professor Morris Nun actually decided on that, and he canvassed the issue, and a lot of these issues that were discussed then are still on the agenda. And that means that there is the opportunity for discussion to occur in relation to that. The other point that's been made is, and it was mentioned by Alderman Von Berto, that she said, this is, this motion that's before us is, is, is legit, it's, it's a possibility. And it is, because there is two processes here. One, we can make a decision tonight, or two, we could go through the process, and the earliest we can have in relation to the, the tabling of the petition would be the sixteenth of July 2018. We heard that from the GM and other speakers this evening. So if the barn door is closed, the horse is bolted, in, in essence. So look, the possibility of, of trying to have this meeting sooner rather than later is, I believe, so important that we need to be able to have it rather than wait till the sixteenth of July 2018 to be able to do that. I know this is an issue which is of importance, but at the same time, it's, I believe it's appropriate for us to be able to say to the people that Rossney Hill Development is a really important issue, and Clarence is taking that bold step of holding a public meeting, and those councillors who attend, I, I support the comment that we have to be very careful with our comments, because we are not at that stage of, of being in the planning authority, but we can listen.
Thank you, Alderman James. So the motion before the chair is that council convenes a public meeting between seven and fourteen days. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Item ten, reports from outside bodies, reports, ten point one, reports from single and joint authorities. Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, there's nothing to report there. Copying refused disposal site joint authority. Alderman Campbell.
Yes, Mr Mayor, we had our quarterly meeting last Thursday, and the full report will be made available for the next council meeting.
Under Tas Water, I'd like to report that in regard to progressing the MOU between Tas Water, its owners and the state government, on the government becoming a part owner, councils will receive a full information pack, which includes financial modelling, a proposed constitution, and legislative changes in mid to late July. Regional forums, open to all elected members convened by the Chair of Tas Water and the Treasurer, will be conducted mid to late August, as well as an owners' representative meeting late August to further discuss detail. There will be a special meeting in late September to vote on constitutional changes, by which time councils will have needed to form a position on the government becoming a part owner and formally authorise their own representatives to vote on these matters. I'll table that report. Alderman James.
Yes, Mr Mayor, you mentioned about the regional forums in relation to this. Firstly, is that open to the public?
It'll be open to all elected representatives at this stage.
Okay, to all elected representatives?
Yes. And officers of council.
And officers, so in actual fact, none of the public would be obviously invited to-
Not envisaged at this stage, Alderman.
I was, I was going to suggest that it, it was open- I was going to suggest that it was open to the public. How are you going to be able to advertise this and obviously get the word out to all in Sundry before the due date?
It's a council decision. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving on to 10.2, reports from council on special committees and other representative bodies. Yep, are there? We'll take this first. Alderman here.
Mr Mayor, I have the minutes of the Business East Gordon Management Meeting for-.
Thank you. Alderman Chong.
I have the Community Health and Wellbeing Committee, the Richmond Advisory Committee and also a short report from the Local Government Association General Meeting last week.
Are there any? Alderman Von Berto.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have the Waste Strategies South minutes from the 26th of February 2018, the Clarence Positive Aging Advisory Committee minutes from the 15th of March 2018, and the Alma's Activities Centre Clarence minutes from the 17th of April 2018.
You. Alderman James.
A question through you, to Alderman Von Berto. With the Positive Aging Committee, what sort of activities do you envisage that the committee will be undertaking in the next six months?
Is that, I mean, the best way to answer that, I guess, would be with a report back unless you want something read out now.
I'll take that on note.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports? Moving on to item 11, reports of officers, 11.1. The information contained in the weekly briefing reports on the 7th, 40th and 21st of May be noted. Move to Alderman Campbell. Second to Alderman Pierce, thank you. Any questions on the weekly briefing reports? Okay, so put the motion, they be noted, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. There's nothing at item 11.2. So I advise that council now intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. And before moving on to 11.3.1, General Manager.
Mr Mayor, sorry, I've got to get my right one. 11.3.1, we've had a request from the applicant to withdraw this matter pending further discussion and consultation with all the parties involved.
Thank you. I have a move and a second, Alderman Pierce, second to Alderman Campbell. Being procedural, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.3.2 is a subdivision application at 4 York Street and 55 Cambridge Road in Belray for four lot subdivision. Thanks, Alderman Von Berto. Second up, Alderman here, thank you. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually think that this is a very strategic development application. It's actually going to be very beneficial as far as those people who actually buy the lot. And it's also going to be very beneficial for the wider community in relation to the ceiling of the laneway. And ultimately, it looks as though there might be some multiple dwellings. And so that will actually be very handy for those people who actually live in the area because they will be able to partake of all of the services and infrastructure that are actually being developed in that Belray area. So I support the motion.
Alderman here. Other speakers? There being no other speakers, I put the motion which is recommending approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3 is a development application at 27 King Street, Belray, partial demolition, alterations and additions to building. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have circulated a motion and that is that the application be refused for the following reasons.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Pierce, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Pierce. The mayor and colleagues this evening, we heard from two speakers in relation to the proposal at 27 King Street. The question that has arisen, in my view, is that the, we're not talking about a small or minor scale addition here, but rather an attempt to impose a large contemporary design on a clearly identifiable heritage building. Also, it was mentioned in the course of the meeting that there has been the involvement of the Heritage Council. And of course, in the submission by Mr Chapman, he made the comment that it depends on where you actually cited the actual development as to whether or not it would have an impact on the adjoining properties. So in actual fact, if you stood back from the actual facade or from the property boundary and back to a distance which is not directly in front, there, at that point, you can notice the impact it would have on the actual development and how it would impinge upon the two property owners in particular on either side of number 27. Under the performance criteria, and it was mentioned this evening, the acceptable solutions said one thing. And then, of course, and it wasn't really taken to the next degree as to whether or not the performance criteria comes into play. And that is really what is the crux of the issue here. The performance criteria, whether you accept it as being subjective or objective, is a question that is really confronting and found in a lot of councils as far as the planning scheme is concerned. But under clause 13.7.2 P2 of Clarence interim planning scheme, it says that if an overall scale and bulk, materials and built form significantly detracts from the historic heritage at place, then in fact, this council can make a decision and exercise its discretion in relation to whether or not it approves or otherwise the particular proposal. And one of the reasons for this is, in fact, the design of the building operations and additions are of an unsatisfactory response to the historic place and the street scape setting. Now, we've all accepted, and we've tried in this place, to try to get the TPC to recognise Belray Fluff as a key area within the city. And I have said on numerous occasions that it's almost on a par with the Glebe in Hobart or Battery Point. And so the historic and cultural nature of the Belray Fluff is of such significant importance within the city that we need to be able to make sure that when we make a decision, that we actually accept the fact that we have submitted to the TPC our effort and support to maintain that as a cultural historic area within the city. So within this motion, we can refuse it. And at the same time, we have to give reasons. But the scale and bulk of this and the impact on historic buildings within the city, and in particular King Street, will have a detrimental effect on the actual properties adjoining and also in the immediate vicinity. And I seek council colleagues' support to refuse the motion.
Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, look, I don't like to move refusal motions. I like to be very hostile and get this city moving. But Alderman James is quite right. We have written to the TPC and we think this area of Belray is very special to us. But when I look at the, and I know this area well, Mayor, and when I look at the bulk and scale, I'm not knocking the people for wanting to develop their house. I totally agree with them doing something. I just think this has just gone a wee bit overboard. I really do. And I think, and I think the speaker said tonight, a bit of mediation, a bit of talking. I think it's a win-win situation. As I said, I'm not normally one to refuse things. I just think this needs to be looked at again. This is an area that we've tried to really look after, but, you know, the TPC doesn't seem to want to follow our wishes. So, look, in this case, and I regret doing it, but I've got to support refusal.
Other speakers? Alderman Cusick.
Thank you, Speaker. I support Alderman James's motion. I've been up and looked at this and I agree with Mr Chapman that the properties in this vicinity, around his house and Mr Reelock's house, are very attractive, heritage properties. It's proposed in the recommendation that a lot of concessions should be granted in relation to this proposal. I believe too many. I believe we do have, and I've spoken about this few weeks ago, National Property Union, so I believe we do have an obligation to protect heritage value within our cities. And I think that this proposal is just over the top given the area.
I too support the refusal on the grounds that, again, we have an example of overbuilding. When the new planning scheme requirements came in, it gave the applicants all the discretion they wanted and none to the council. However, in this application, there are four major areas, privacy, sunlight, the building envelope and height, that do not comply by the standards given. If we need to change the planning scheme, by all means, let's have a review. But until then, I won't support these types of discretion being used to extend the building envelope way beyond what is stated.
Okay. I find this a difficult one, but that's the job. And I think irrespective of what decision is made tonight, this matter will be going to appeal on all the-. In thinking about my decision, I have to think about the clause 13.7.2 P2 of the interim planning scheme on the basis that it is an interim planning scheme. And some of the norms, even though we've been using it for a little while now, are still yet to be established. And to some degree around this issue of bulk, I suspect that if this is refused tonight, then that may help sort of establish some norms around it. I do have some concerns. And as I said, it's not a straightforward one to consider.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My, Alderman Walker, I have been grappling with this one a lot and considering it very carefully. And it's one of those ones where there are some provisions under the planning scheme, under the performance criteria, that are difficult to interpret, that have some degree of subjectivity. However, those particular performance criteria, I believe it's fairly clear cut when it comes to those residential standards around whether it complies with the performance criteria in terms of the building envelope. I believe that it doesn't. I believe that is fairly clear cut. I think that the difficulty comes in looking at the heritage elements of the proposal. And there are a number of criteria in relation to that. Alderman James has chosen one in particular in his motion as reasons for refusal. In trying to look through each of those criteria one by one and determine, does this development detract from the historic heritage elements of the building? I guess I rely fairly heavily on the heritage advice that's provided. The heritage advisor that has advised council and the Heritage Council themselves are relevant experts in this field. I need to point out, however, it is important to note that the Heritage Council, if they consent to an application, that's not in consideration of council's planning scheme. That's actually in consideration with your own guidelines, which may be different. There are elements of the two that may cross over. It's unfortunate that we don't have a report from them, you know, that shows that detail that we can see which of those elements applies to our planning scheme. But going through, you know, the various performance criteria in E13.7.1, 7.2 etc., I note that the heritage advisor has said that the facade of the building is the most important historic element, that the extension in terms of the bulk and dimensions is a sort of a continuation of the bulk of the building, which is fairly bulky anyway. It maintains the roof line, it maintains a similar height, maintains a similar width. And then in terms of the materials, while it is noted in the report that it is a modern-looking extension, that there are elements, the elements and forms of that extension in terms of the roof, in terms of the materials used, and there is a condition added in terms of the colours of those materials, is actually a, is to complement the existing heritage elements of the building. So, you know, it's a very difficult one to grapple with and a difficult decision to make. But having looked at those performance criteria in detail, I am going to support, I'm going to not support Alderman James's motion and support the officer's recommendation.
Write a reply, Alderman James.
Yes, seek council's support.
Thank you. So the motion before the Chair is refusal on the scale of overall scale, bulk and materials. All those in favour? Against? Moving on to 11.3.4. It's a development application at 21 Harmony Lane, South Arm for skate park and recreational facilities. Did you see which one was said? Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I wish to put the officer's recommendation.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Chong, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I think the first point to make in relation to this matter, and it is an important point, is that the first development application is still exempt. So that means that if, for one reason or another, this development application that's before us tonight was not to get up, the first development application could be actually implemented. Granted, it may be a little bit difficult to find solutions as far as the operation now, but I think it is important for us to note that there is a valid permit. The next thing that I want to cover is that within this development application, there are some very detailed conditions in relation to the major issues of concern which are around noise and amenities. So I think that's very important to keep in mind as well. Also, the officers have gone through and given a very clear background as far as this development application is concerned. It's been almost five years since discussions actually started in relation to this and that it comes to fruition hopefully tonight. And I think it's important to note that it has been through two iterations of the master plan and that the master plan actually details the development application that we have for tonight. When it's gone through those master plan consultations, and they've been lengthy, the vast majority of submissions are in support of the master plan and including the hub stand, which includes the skate park. I feel that tonight I need to focus on the representation because it's been put in the report that there are 72 representations that are actually against the DA and that there are 65 in favour. I think it's important to actually drill down a little bit further in relation to those representations. The representations that are actually in favour of the development application come from the community. They're individual submissions from each of the members of the community. And they're from some pretty important organisations within the community. The school, SAPR and other members of the community who actually have a strong focus on the development of the area. I'd like to read part of- I'd like to read part of the submission. And the school has actually noted that the proposal for this development has been driven by young people in the area, who when the process began were students at our school. The fact that they've continued to push this process forward over five years is a testament to the continued need for such a facility. There is no doubt that this multi-use hardstand area, including skate park, will be a significant boon to this community. It increases the options for young people who wish to engage in healthy, social, purposeful activities. Our students are very keen to see this become a reality and there is no question that this would prove popular and be well used. The submissions in favour come from young people themselves, they come from parents of young people, both mothers and fathers, they come from grandparents, they come from more mature people in the community who want to use the skate park as well. And they are individuals. In relation to the submissions against, it's important to note that a pro forma was actually signed by 70 people individually, albeit, but that 70 people had their individual pro formas, which were all the same, put actually collated by two people within the community. So I think it's really important to note that.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have consistently supported this proposal over the, as Alderman Von Berto says, nearly five years it's taken to get to tonight. Providing facilities for both active and passive recreation is an important part of the work that we as a council do throughout the municipality. And these facilities, the skate park, basketball court, and tennis ball, will provide facilities for a range of age groups and interests in the area. Alderman Von Berto and the deputation earlier mentioned that there's an existing valid DA, but I would like to comment particularly on the amount of work that's been done since then to mitigate, I guess, the effects based on the comments that came out from that original DA, to create a new design which was further away from the property boundaries, it's smaller in size and in height. And that this was done as a result of the community consultation from the development application that came out previously. I do understand there are still a range of concerns that are held by the community, but I do believe that the conditions that are given in the permit in terms of particularly landscaping and enforcement, if there are noise issues, means that we should support this development application tonight.
Alderman here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think it's important to note that this is a planning decision and it needs to be made on relevant planning matters. It needs to be made on whether development complies with the scheme. The purpose of the community consultation that happened and representations that go into the planning process are only to receive feedback that points out where a development does or does not comply with the scheme. So there are a lot of arguments that I think that have been included in this debate, particularly coming from the community, and I mean both for and against, that are really arguments in terms of whether or not the skate park should be included in the master plan. That is not a relevant consideration for what we're looking at tonight. The fact that there is another planning scheme in place is also not a relevant consideration. Each planning application needs to be determined on its merits. The weight of opposition in favour of this is not a planning consideration, the weight of support for this is not a relevant planning consideration. There are a number of things that are relevant planning considerations, you know, the performance criteria in relation to noise and privacy and so on. They've been considered very carefully by the planning staff, but on the basis of the planning merits of the proposal, regardless of whether you're for the proposal or against the proposal in terms of your personal views, the planning merits of the proposal, I believe, stack up and for that reason, not for the reasons that Alderman Von Berto's outlined in her presentation, but for that reason, I'm supporting the approval.
James. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to clarify, not clarify, but make the point that the original permit did not cater for hours of operation. So we had a permit in place at that time, but we didn't tick all the boxes in relation to it. And so as a result of that, we are now faced with a development application which does include certain hours of operation. I think that's important because it was mentioned earlier in the discussion, Mr. Mayor, that there's already a permit in place, but that didn't cover all options. And that's why we're basically at this point of considering a development application. The other thing that needs to be mentioned here is that on the consultation side of things, it was very, very close in relation to the number of representations that were for and against. And in one of the papers here, it mentioned there were 72 against and 65 in favour of the development. And so that by the very nature means that this particular issue is an issue that the community is very, very concerned about. And therefore, as the planning authority, we need to make sure that if we make a decision in relation to this, that we are covering all options and basically deciding that it's appropriate for this park, skate park, to be in that location. I've said on numerous occasions and in my response to one of the members of South Arm group today, and I said, I'm opposed to the current location on the basis of the impact it will have on the adjoining properties. The noise is an issue and even the officers, the council officers, have said that if it does not meet the requirement of a skateboard facility, then council will have to construct a wall, a sound wall, in order to sort of minimize the impact of the noise. And that's been accepted, that we don't know for sure what in fact the noise generation will occur in relation to this until it's built. Because there's no way, no one, you can do an assessment on the noise until you build the facility. And then if it doesn't stack up, what do you do? The fallback position is, and it's been mentioned in the documentation, and the cost of this wall is about $35,000 or $25,000 to $30,000, as a fallback position in relation to the noise. Now, if we had that sort of situation where it's been acknowledged in the documentation that there are significant noise impacts on the adjoining property, then really, we have to be very careful about whether we decide to approve this or not. And I, for one, would rather say, look, we have a problem here with noise. I would not support building a wall after we've done our assessment and determined that it is in fact, does not meet the standards as applicable in relation to noise generation. I'd rather say no now. And I've said all along that we need a location in that area, and I know I disagree with my colleague on this, but I've said that we need to have a skate park in that area, that I will not support this motion on the basis that we have identified the noise, we haven't been able to address it other than to do a noise assessment after it's built, and then if it doesn't meet the guidelines, we've got to build a wall. I will not support the recommendation.
Alderman here?
Yeah. And of course, skate park obviously gets the attention when you look at the whole area that we're doing and the improvements we're making. I think it's fantastic, I really do. I know I've had calls and against for the skate park, but when you look at the whole area of what it's gaining, I just think it's a fantastic effort. And, you know, one thing seems to be hijacking. I know people have got concerns about it, but it's going to improve this area now and this whole development, I think.
Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I want to state from the outset that if this motion is unsuccessful, I intend to move a motion of approval. There is no joy in opposing skate infrastructure. It's a pursuit that has given me much over a significant part of my life. Skate infrastructure is something that was severely lacking in Clarence in my teens. And by the way, I don't agree with the correlation of skating and drug use, and there's a strong theory to support my view. That is called Darwinism. You cannot skate inebriated for very long. Skating is a great activity and the increasing female participation through activities such as shree shreds, I think is a pursuit that will continue to grow. To this end, Clarence has a positive role to play. We're not anti-skating. In this term of council, we've built the state's best skate park, not far from here. And whilst there might have been some issues with this construction, I've not had any feedback about noise because we got the location right. We don't have a track record of always getting locations right, and this has been to the long-term consternation of several communities. And when council does get it wrong, it makes the task of those of us that enjoy skateboarding and want to see more facilities, it makes the task of advocating for that so much harder. If a withdrawal is successful, then I'd be fighting to quarantine all the funds to skate infrastructure in the municipality. If we are building what in effect will be our number two piece of skate infrastructure, it should be relatively accessible to the wider Clarence and greater Hobart skate community, and they should be involved in the process. I've been consistent through the master plan in section that this was not a suitable location. And even those around the table who have supported it acknowledge it is an ideal. Well, it's actually far less than ideal. It's the least worst approach to a challenge council adopted without the details in a master plan for the site. Some of the photos in the agenda don't, to me, seem to truly depict the distance between the proposal and some of the buildings depicted. It is a proposal that is projected or hypothesized to generate 64.6 decibels. This barely squeaks through the 65 decibel noise threshold. And whilst mentioned in passing that the proposal notes that if further noise attenuation in the form of a sound barrier wall could be required, really, the funds and that process should be part of this because we just don't know. And also, the impact of noise is magnified by the low ambient background noise in this very quiet part of the world. For some around the table voting on this will be incredibly challenging tonight. I think it might be a contest of thinking consistency with previous patterns and things that have come before, and that would be the short-term expedient approach. But you've also got to bear in mind the medium and long-term consequences if we approve this. It's certainly not a suitable or ideal location and it has to lie to the South Arm community. Furthermore, I'm not sure that a needs analysis has really been done on all the infrastructure. So it is regret that I can't support the motion.
Alderman Devers?
Mr. Mayor, if you look at the night, the report indicates that the compliance with acceptable solutions for noise and missions can be achieved. The proposal for the multi-use hardstand skate park is considered to satisfy all irrelevant acceptable solutions and performance criteria of the scheme, and therefore accordingly is recommended for approval.
Other speakers? Alderman Chong?
Again, in relation to noise, I note that on page 118 of the report that the proposed skate park is not expected to reach the intensity of the North Hobart skate park, but it will be similar to Gilston Bay, Demerol Beach, and Risen Vale. Risen Vale is quite large, and within their terms of reference, they noted that the sport local is close by and that there is, it generates a source of noise, maybe not as consistently as the park. But within the new design parameters, which have taken into account the reduction of noise, it is noted that the noise testing was based on a skateboard drop of every 30 seconds and that the proposed skate park is likely to have far less intensity of use, therefore resulting in less skateboard impact noise from the studies that were done with other parks of similar size. And just to reply to a comment within the report on the survey of support within the community, the numbers that are on page 101 is that local responses in support were 112 to the total number of noise of 25.
Proud of your platform, Alderman Von Berto. So the motion before the chair is the recommendation, which is that the skate park be approved subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11.3.5 is a development application at 314 and 318 East Devon Highway, Gilston Bay, for services, basically amendment to car parking and access.
Tom, this?
Alderman Chong, thank you. Alderman Cusick, seconded. I'll just pause for a moment. I think we're about to be disturbed for a moment.
I don't think everybody knew that, did you?
We can shut the door there, please. Just hang on for a minute.
A couple of people coming in from the other room.
Oh, fair enough. Thank you. I need to foreshadow, and I see that a number of the audience is still here, probably in anticipation of 11.7.3, which concerns the Rosney Hill Recreation Area Expressions of Interest process. I'd like to advise that that motion is being withdrawn tonight and held over. Essentially, the Alderman wanted further information at a workshop to discuss it further before we make a decision on it. So 11.7.3 is being withdrawn tonight. Moving on to 11.3.5, development application as announced before, 314 and 318 East Devon Highway. Moved, Alderman Chong?
I'd support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, seconded. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Other speakers? A write a reply required. The motion is recommending approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.6, development application at 509 Jellibrand Drive Sanford for ancillary dwelling and outfitting. Moved, Alderman Campbell. Seconded, Alderman Hume. Alderman Campbell, you wish to speak to Alderman Hume? Other speakers? Okay, so I'll put the motion for approval. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.7 is a development application at 14A Victoria SMR Delray for Public Fair. Moved, Alderman Cusick. Seconded, Alderman Hume. Thank you. Alderman Cusick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just glad I'm in the community and coming to ask it. There's been a number of presentations and I think each of those have been a bit an antipathy to the office. It's been a few while in the coming and it's been on the agenda for a long time and under discussion for a long time, and I seek council support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to point out that like the skate park issue earlier, it's with council putting forward the development application, we cannot debate the merits of, you know, whether or not council should be putting this forward. It is a, it has a planning application, it's a planning consideration, and it does meet all the relevant planning standards.
James?
Yeah, look, I'll be supporting this recommendation, and it's interesting that council did it right in relation to this. And I made the comment on Friday and I congratulated Mr. Graham on his handling of the situation when the public forum, when council initiated a public forum or community consultation or community participation process in relation to this. It's a little bit different from the actual Rosney Hill. It's a little bit different from the actual Rosney Hill, but then again, we actually went through the process and we convened a meeting and I thought it went off extremely well. Too bad that we don't use this sort of procedure on other projects, namely on the Kangaroo Bay or on the Rosney Hill, because it does signal to the people that council is listening and is wants to share information with them in relation to this. So it, I attended the meeting and I think one or two others around the table did as well. Um, we weren't asked for our opinion on it, um, the night, we weren't asked whether we would be considering our opinion or making a comment in relation to the DA when it came to council. What we did so well on that occasion, we sat, or I sat, and listened to what the people had to say. And as a result of that, what happened? We extended the pier because how are you able to get wheelchair access along a, a section of pier when in fact, you know, there's two-way traffic? And that has been incorporated within this. Also, the, the question that was, um, asked of the, um, of the, uh, the engineer, um, as to whether or not the actual structure and whether there was a, a possibility of having some railing along there as well. And that was taken in consideration. Did the councillors push this? Were they asked for any question or asked for their consideration as to whether they were going to support the DA or not? Not at all, not at all. It was done properly and I believe that, and having discussed it with a, a couple of my colleagues, uh, from the area, who as a norm, Mr. Mayor, would in fact say, look, is this really important? Is the money, uh, well spent? It wasn't, uh, that wasn't mentioned at all. What it was, was information sharing and we as Aldermen who were there, and I think about half a dozen of us were there, we sat and listened. So, you know, on the one hand, in relation to the public peer of the DA is, and when we're talking about Rosney Hill, which council is going to be the managing sort of, uh, agent?
Alderman James, it is.
Therefore, there are, there are, there is that particular case, Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm gonna pull you up on a point of order. Would you please sit down? No, I won't. Just sit down for a moment.
I'd just like to conclude and by saying that this is an excellent project and I hope council votes for it unanimously.
The point of order was, Alderman James, i- is that unlike Rosney Hill, council is the applicant in this case, we are the developer, we control that, and as the developer and applicant, we held the meeting. We did not have that luxury.
We don't need the debate, Mr. Mayor. We don't need the debate.
Would you let me finish? I, the, council did not have control of the process at Rosney Hill. It's in the hands of the developer. Any other speakers? Right of reply? Alderman Cusick. So the motion before the chair is for approval for the, uh, Worf Public Pier. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to, um, asset management. There have been no items under customer service. Uh, eleven point five point one is the demolition of ninety-two Cambridge Road, Delray. Moved Alderman Campbell, seconded Alderman Chong. Box picked the motion?
Aye.
Alderman Chong, second the motion?
Um, just very briefly, just to say that as per the report, this is not in an habitable state. Um, and I understand we've had issues with Watsons in the past. It makes good sense to move on.
Yeah, Alderman Chong, did you want to speak to it?
Still lovely little historic cottages. It's a shame we can't move it and preserve it. We need a historical history museum, just to go.
Other speakers. So the motion is then that we authorize the GM to proceed with the demolition. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Eleven point five point two is the cycle strategy, Clarence Street to Kangaroo Bay. Moved Alderman Von Berto. Seconded?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Uh, I actually believe that option three is essential and I believe that from the point of view that it's a connection for people walking and cycling. And it's incredibly important from the perspective of when the driveway, um, at the yacht club is closed, um, then by the bridge, um, then that ramp is the only suitable detour route. And so if we have a, um, DDA compliant ramp, it will be less steep and the cyclists, I don't know about pedestrians, won't pick up the same level of speed and that they do now. And I actually feel that at the moment, there's a, a conflict, um, as far as the existing ramp is concerned, where the driveway, um, actually meets with the top of the ramp. And that's going to be hopefully eliminated when we, yeah, we hope and that we actually do, um, a new ramp. And that when that driveway is also removed. There's an example, at least one example, um, in another city, Hobart, where there's actually a ramp scenario where it meets a car park. And that's at the Hobart Regular Track, uh, where it enters a car park at Mole Street, which is, serves as a cafe and a childcare centre. So there's precedent for the type of treatment that we're looking at. And I think the other important aspect is that the yacht club car park is actually a low-speed environment. So they are all the pertinent points, um, as well as, uh, what is in the report. So I actually am recommending that we support the officer's recommendation.
Alderman Chong?
Um, I agree with that observation, but I would like to include some talks with Watson One as well, just that in the future, that whole area is going to become really busy and there needs to be two accesses. There is another access up by the hospitality building, so there's an access up there plus at the, at the overpass bridge. So there's two other key accesses onto Clane Beach Road and the footpath. So I just feel that staff should consider that option one in their further negotiations for improvements as time goes by.
Alderman Hume?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can see from the report why option three is preferable, um, but I do have, I do have a bit of concern about, um, bicycles entering a car park. And I just wanted to put a, a question through you to, to Mr. Graham, whether it's envisaged as part of the detailed design, um, that there'll be some maybe line markings or warning signs through, through that, um, car park to, to try and minimize the conflict between bicycles and, um, vehicles parking.
Graham?
Um, yes, Mayor, signage and, um, the field of line marking and painting in the entire area will, will be key. There's multiple uses in terms of pedestrians, vehicles, cyclists, um, tram walkers, all sorts of people walking through the area. Um, the advantage of the, of the option three ramp is it, hopefully it'll be DDA, so there'll be a long, like the current one is quite steep, so there'll be plenty of line of sight. But it is important that clear signage at the length of the car park, um, to that entry ramp if it is, this is that it proceeds.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do, I do support, um, the officer's recommendation and, and motion moved, but I, yeah, um, I, I think some, um, line markers and signage would certainly be, be a good idea.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, I think it's important to read the recommendations slowly, but council continues to pursue strategic option three as reported for the connection of the cycling infrastructure. We're pursuing it. Um, we're advancing, we're seeing, we're making sure that it's, you know, the most viable way forward. Uh, we're not saying this is definitely gonna happen, we're not drawing the lines on the road tomorrow. We're just continuing to advance this as the, as the, as the best of the options to, to deal with, uh, cycling traffic.
Right of reply? Now, the motion is then that we, uh, continue to pursue option three. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Moving on to governance, eleven point seven point one, that, concerning the Harris Men's Shed and the Harrow Bowls Club, condition, conditional variation, I'd least agree with Alderman Chong.
I'll do this next.
Thank you. Seconded Alderman Walker.
Um, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, there's been, um, quite a range of negotiation between the Men's Shed and the Bowls Club to ensure that both are happy with the proposal. Um, there's a number of other constrictions around it, if you like, that there must be a valid DA in place first and that the Men's Shed members must become members of the centre. And I think those are two good conditions to put on this and I seek council support.
Yes, indeed. Uh, it was some fineting and negotiation that, uh, has been achieved through this process and it's gonna be a good outcome, not just for the Men's Shed but for the wider community.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Uh, this is, um, notwithstanding that the DA, uh, or subject to a DA being required, has there been any assessment, and I'll put the question to you, Mr. Mayor, in the capacity as the overall spokesperson for Clarence Council, um, has there been any, um, assessment on the cost of this? Can you tell us at this stage or is it early days? Oh, I thought you could.
I've deferred and, uh, asked the general manager, thanks.
Oh, okay. Right, thanks. I'm not getting any eye contact from any of you.
Uh, we'll take that question on notice, Alderman James.
Three, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to take that on notice. I'm not, I'm certainly not aware of the costing being undertaken. Um, the initial Men's Shed was conduct, was constructed certainly with a contribution from council, but certainly with state government, I think state government grant funding as well, or Commonwealth, one of the, state government grant funding as well. But, um, no, this is only, um, signaling to them that subject to getting all of those ducks in a row, we would be prepared to lease the land to them.
Any other speakers? Okay, so, um, the recommendation is that the lease be conditionally varied. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point three has been withdrawn.
Eleven point seven point two.
We'll take eleven point seven point two, thank you. Moved Alderman Campbell, was that your second? Did you second that? Thank you, Alderman James.
You're gracious.
No, it is, it's already there.
Alderman James, the second, would you like to speak to it?
Alderman Campbell's already, by the fact that he wants to move it, so I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, eh? But you don't want to speak to it?
No, I think it's handled.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Question, Mayor, now I notice this is a fifty-four A Tar Drive. Now fifty-four has been, it's a unit owned by Mission Aswell, but some of the units have been funded regularly. Now, will this alleviate some of that problem?
Um, three, Mr. Mayor, um, no, this is unconnected. This is just, this is just purely an easement for a water main.
Other speakers? Okay, so, right of reply, not required, but so that, uh, the motion is that we approve the creation of the easement. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point three has been withdrawn. Eleven point seven point four concerns the ZSL Unit Trust, Alderman Campbell.
The recommendation, uh, has been sometimes sorting it all out, but now the council received three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars and eight dollars for the, uh, passing these units over to the Kingborough Council.
Okay, that was seconded by Alderman Walker. Would you like to speak to it?
Look, I'm happy to endorse it. Uh, I think this has been a much, uh, going through the unit trust process, uh, is streamlining the operation, uh, and I think would deliver long-term benefits to this council. I think diversifying the ownership, uh, was always part of the process and Kingborough, I think, are wise in taking it up. This is a, uh, public health, uh, piece of infrastructure and, um, having security around the, the way that it's funded and operated is, is a really important thing. So I think that, um, you know, Kingborough have made a wise, wise decision and, um, we should just keep seeing this move forward.
Few other speakers? Okay, so the recommendation is we approve the sale of those units. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. And moving on to item twelve, Alderman's question time. No matters on notice, questions without notice, Alderman James?
First question I have, I'd like to put to you as the mayor of Clarence, um, and that is, um, it was mentioned earlier by the GM that the, uh, that, that the petition for the, um, uh, the public meeting on the Rosney Hill development might be, um, round about the sixteenth of July eighteen. As, uh, in your capacity as mayor, do you see that being extended beyond the sixteenth of July and probably into August or September? Perhaps I could get some response, so obviously it's being recorded so that we can obviously pass the message on to those people who tune in to the recording system. So through, well, could you, could you sort of advise inflation to that, please?
Thank you for the lecture, Alderman James.
That's fine, please.
Um, well, that is a target date at this stage. Uh, when I listened to the general managers you did, he, uh, indicated, I think in fact that my friend, Mr. Elson, indicated that mid-July was likely.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, it was actually the eighteenth of July, not eight.
I'm glad I said mid-July. Did you have a second question on this?
I do, yes. Look, um, uh, I'm sure my colleagues have received a, uh, email from, um, uh, Mark Killer of number, uh, Bamra Street in Lauderdale.
Uh, Alderman James, do you mind if we take that in post-session? It deals with property matters, uh?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yep, so I'll save it till.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Uh, yes, uh, here's a pop quiz for you. Uh, how much are we currently contributing, uh, to the Southern Tasmanian Council Authority that was formerly known as Big South before it went back to being Southern Tasmanian Council?
Uh, general manager, do you have a figure?
Um, I, I don't, I don't, Mr. Mayor, but I, I, I think I'm correct in saying it's a significantly reduced sum this forthcoming financial year, as in eighteen-nineteen, because of carried forward surplus grant funds. And I, but I, I can provide you with the precise numbers. I don't have the draft budget in front of me, I'm sorry. It's all right. I can provide you with the draft numbers, uh, through the briefing report.
Thanks very much, general manager. Second question?
Yes, the, uh, South Arm Highway is a piece of glorious infrastructure built, uh, by the state government. Uh, we'll notice that, uh, if you're traveling through the, um, the roundabout and heading towards, uh, the Glebe Hill area, that, uh, on one side of the highway is a paling fence that, uh, is missing quite a few palings. Now whilst this piece of glorious infrastructure was given to us, uh, or provided by the state government, can you confirm for me who would be ultimately responsible for the maintenance of that paling fence that is in a somewhat suboptimal state of affairs?
Uh, the general manager's volunteer to answer some.
Oh, thank you.
Three, Mr. Mayor, um, look, the, the, the issue you're alluding to is, is one that is subject to, I would say, a fair bit of debate between ourselves and the Department of State Growth. Um, you might recall that some, several meetings ago or some time ago, we asked the state government to review, review the Roads and Jetties Act, which is nineteen-thirty-something and hasn't been really amended in any detail since then. The point I'm getting to is that that act provides for where there is a footpath in a state highway road reserve, that the maintenance outside of the main vehicular carriageway is the responsibility of the council. It is debatable and currently being debated with the Department of State Growth, particularly in relation to the South Arm Highway, whether that then extends to it being reasonable that council be expected to maintain the sound walls and the paling fences along the highway corridor. I haven't answered your question directly, other than to say it's a, it's a matter that's under discussion with the Department of State Growth. I will get a, I will get a definitive response from them and forward it to you. So just a clarification, could it be perceived that we would adjust a fixed paling fence for us for eighty-metre speed reduction in the part of the road? Uh, I'm not sure that. I'm not sure that they operate on the basis of trade-offs, but I can put the proposition to them if council so wishes.
Alderman Farrell.
My first question probably needs a longer answer, but does council have any contingency plans for building any new sewer plants in Clarence Uphill? Well, the currently, you know, the Ropely one is in a, very close to a high erosion seafront and with the amount of development that has occurred in that area, I am of the opinion personally from very old statistics that I vaguely remember, that that plant needs to have an extension. However, I would suggest we look at putting it on there.
Alderman Farrell, I can advise that Tassporta has no plans for a new waste treatment plant within the municipality of Clarence at the moment.
Okay, so the second one was with the creek that comes down off the hill behind the Ropely, oh, Bayview High School, the creek in the last storm washed a lot of rubbish and weeds and that down.
That Clarence Plant's regulated?
No, that's Stokel Creek actually, that one, but it goes into Stokel Creek. So I'm wondering who's responsible for looking at cleaning up the creek. It comes down the side of John Paul Two, under the road and from there straight down to the creek. So it's, Chalk is in one place, it looks like it's dammed.
We'll get the staff to have a look at that, I think that'd be council's responsibility. Alderman Chong.
Or shall I do a question in close meeting?
Thank you, Alderman Hume.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I have two questions. The first one is, I brought to Mr Graham's attention another round of the Smart Cities and Suburbs Programme that opened and I was wondering if we're going to have another bite at the cherry.
Graham.
Mr Mayor, we're still reviewing the financial question, I'm asked for a signature from a number of all of us, so yes, they're interested, but I will be made for my recommendation.
Okay, did you have a second question?
Yes. A number of residents, and I understand this has actually been a problem for some, some several years, who use the Rossney link for various programmes through groups like School for Seniors, et cetera. They raise concerns about the amount of parking available and the time, the time limits for the parking. I'm just wondering if we have any plans to address those concerns or whether we could consider plans in a, in a workshop.
Mr Graham? General Manager, are you volunteering?
I don't like volunteering, but I was gonna say, you're correct in saying it's been an ongoing issue for a long period of time. We've been endeavouring to manage it over a period of time by restricting the time limits for cars parking in the, in the car park out the back here, if I can call it that, and, and trying to move the all-day parking into some of the streets surrounding the area there. It is looking like it's reaching a point where we need to however start doing something else. We'll list it as a topic for discussion at a forthcoming workshop.
Yeah, I'm Cusick.
I know I've mentioned this a number of times, the Lauderdale Bank Boat Launching Facility. Now, it's been mentioned to me that, that the closing took no time at all, the reopening seems to be taking an eternity.
Consultant have been engaged to handle it, understand the drawings will be finished in about three weeks' time, are waiting to meet Crown this week, of course, while I manage the McCrown at the high level, understand the approval process of the officers at the next level down, get further details of the exact approval process of the coastal gymologist, or any further expertise.
Two questions. Sorry, Mr Graham, could I just be kept informed of fifty-four Tullard Drive, the front, it's occurring there, Wicket, Maguire, and Bore, I'm not quite sure what's causing the party at fifty-four. Now, my next question.
Do you want to answer that one first?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know, we're gonna be sort of.
Thank you, second question, Alderman Pearce.
Mayor, I'm not, not sure if we can do anything about this, but I've been asked by a few people at the bus mall when people are turning left. A lot of people staying, when they can move to the left, they wanna know how do we get this message out? When they're turning left and they actually go to the left and get out the way of traffic, a lot of cars are turning left but just staying in the lane going forward and holding up everybody. Now, I don't know if we have talked with other people or we can do it ourselves, but you know, maybe we can tell them the news that right now I hear.
About the western end of the bus?
Well, you could say, but.
Debate Bill Street.
So when they start to hit them.
You know, I understand the issue you're raising, we'll have a look at the, whether, I don't know if there's anything we can do from a line marking or arrows on the road or something, but I understand the point, you know.
Alderman Von Beter.
The first one is how is council going to ensure the authenticity of the petition as to the Rossney Hill petition? That is, by what means is council going to determine an individual person has, in the words of section fifty-seven, three B of the Local Government Act, added his or her detail to the electronic petition rather than some other passing?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, look, certainly with the petition being tabled tonight, I'll be certainly working through, we have officers already working through, checking on the, the eligibility of people listed on, on the petition. I understand the, the nature of the, of the question you've asked in relation to the particular wording of the act in that regard. We certainly, in terms of working through it, will be trying to take, I'll go back a step, it is fair to say that the act in this respect is incredibly deficient and vague. We will be working through it though to make, to, and the principle I suppose I'm working from is, in the first instance, are the signatories elected or are they eligible to be on the electors' roll? And secondly, I wanna make sure that I'm not seeking to apply a higher standard than what we would be seeking through a paper petition. I qualify that to the extent that I do need to actually have some discussion and seek some advice in relation to the particular wording of the act, but I, I'm very conscious of not looking to impose things that aren't specifically required or envisioned by the act. Now, it is vague in terms of the actual wording as to what is meant, it's certainly an issue that I've had some discussion with the local director of local government in relation to, and I've got no doubt over the next few days I'll have further discussion with him.
My second question is, when is the recreation needs analysis going to come before council? At council workshop first?
Mr Graham, may I add to this, I can't remember the exact dates, but I think we did put out a briefing report in the last week, week or so, and I think it comes back to council, second of July to a workshop, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our open session of council. I'd like to thank the members of the audience for enduring so far. Unlike state and federal government, we don't have a cabinet and there are matters we have to deal with confidentially, so we do need to go into closed session. Thank you. Yeah, I'll get it. Have a motion, please. Alderman Hume, seconded Alderman Cusick, all those in favour, carried unanimously.